May fifth, two thousand twenty-three, nine o'clock A M. A M. Meeting of the Danville Boyle County Planning and Zoning Commission. And I'm going to ask Commissioner Sleet to give our invocation.
Gracious Father, we thank you for this day that you have given us. We will open our eyes to see the beautiful day that you have. We're grateful and thankful we are. We ask of God that you lead us and direct us as we take care of business for your people. And that everything will be pleasing in your sight that we do for them and all these things. I ask in your name. Amen.
Amen. Next topic is the approval of minutes. And so everybody take a look at them and we'll need a motion to accept.
I move to accept.
Motion by Commissioner Nollet to accept.
I would make offer a correction.
Sure.
I was present and my listeners present.
We can fix that for you.
Yeah, well, just that's all.
Hey, do we have a second with the corrections? Okay, Commissioner Griffin, seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carries. Well, next topic is the financial report. Now, Henry, since we've got two months, September and October, and since September's numbers are included in October, can we just give the October financial report?
Yes, sir. I think that makes sense. And I think that'll give the planning commission all the information they need.
Yeah, okay. So if you go to the page that's titled Statement of Account Activities for the month of Sep. I guess it's actually the month of, oh, September. Oh, you'll see that if you first we'll talk income. If you drop about halfway down the page, you'll see total commission revenue. And for the first three months of the fiscal year, we've got a total commission revenue of fifty-one thousand oh sixty-four. And that is twenty-six percent of the year-to-date budget. And of course, we're three months into the year, which is twenty-five percent of the year-end budget. So we're essentially slightly over year-to-date budget pace or for revenue. Next, I'm going to talk of expense. And if you turn the page over and go over almost to the entire bottom of the page where it says total expenditures, you'll see that our total expenditures for the first three months were forty-two thousand oh seven hundred and seventy-eight, which is eighteen percent of the full-year budget. Oh, so obviously, being the budget pace would be twenty-five percent, we're below budget on expenses and slightly over on revenue. Oh, there's no anything, no anything, nothing really unusual about expenses or revenue to talk about. We have gotten the contributions from the four cities. And so we'll entertain a motion now to accept the financial report as presented.
I move to accept the financial report.
Commissioner Nollet moves to accept.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, then Commissioner Collier, seconds of motions. Are all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, unanimous. So now construction securities. Oh, and this is what Shelby Green Limited, Shelby Green, Page Two, Section, to reduce and renew the letter of credit.
Yes, um, sorry, I just got a request yesterday, I believe, to actually reduce it in addition to renewing the letter of credit. They are asking for a reduction in a total of one hundred twenty-two thousand one hundred instead of the three sixty-nine-nine that we are currently holding. Their list of items that they still have remaining are D G A, asphalt surface, asphalt-based sidewalk, electric service ditching, fifteen-inch H G P pipe storm junction box, and then the ten percent contingency that we look for. This was certified by A G and E Luther Galway. I'm comfortable with the reduction. They basically, like I said, just basically had the base and some of the sidewalk to still do, so. Are there any questions on that? My understanding is that they're probably going to be done by the spring, so we'll renew it for the year, but they probably won't need the full year. That's their goal at least.
Should we change the number that we're renewing?
Yes, so the new number that we would be renewing is one hundred twenty-two thousand one hundred instead of the three sixty-nine-nine.
Any questions? Okay, we need a motion? Yes, I believe.
I make a motion to accept.
Okay, we have a motion to accept and second, though. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, unanimous? Okay, next topic is subdivision approvals. And I think we'll go ahead and review all of these unless there's anything unusual, Michaela, and then just approved by a single vote.
Uh, no, they're, they're all minors. Um, I don't believe there's anything. Yep.
Okay.
Subdivision approvals, we've got first Bertha Harmon has applied for the subdivision of one hundred fifty-two point three four seven acres of land into four tracts. It's located at zero Short Line Road in Parable Boyle County. The property is zoned ag. We have gotten this plat back with corrections and signatures. It's ready for final approval. Secondly.
Questions, just while we're on each one, should we try to ask?
Yes, absolutely.
So, so your comment, the comments on the, on the plat about structures, have we dealt with that?
Yes, there are no structures. That was just a note to myself with a question mark there to ask them.
Okay, and the one sec plat that, or track three A that's marked as too small, has that been corrected?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, it is the standard size now, right? One, I don't remember the exact.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, ready to move on? Any more questions? Okay, secondly, we've got Rick and Chad Cole. They've applied for the subdivision of a six point seven nine three acre parcel of land located at zero Phillips Lane in Boyle and Lincoln Counties. The property is zoned ag. This is very obviously a non-conforming use. Uh, these mobile homes have been here for quite some time. It's been reviewed, all corrections have been made, it's ready for final approval and signature today.
Yeah, I'm just going to add a little bit to this. Um, my, my interpretation of this, this is bordering Lincoln County as well, so this is in Lincoln, this is Boyle. It's obviously a non-conforming use. We want to allow multiple dwellings to be on one tract. My interpretation is that they're not increasing the non-conformity, they're just simply reducing the size of the lot. So that's my interpretation. If you all feel differently, then we would need to review that because then it, you know, we wouldn't be able to approve it as such. But that was Lincoln County's interpretation as well, but if you have any questions on that.
So all we really are is the, is putting the perimeter around on this one, reducing it down.
Yeah, it was on a bigger tract and now they're reducing it. My interpretation would be that these are, that this is a non-conforming use. So if one of the manufactured homes was to be removed voluntarily, it wouldn't be able to be replaced. So the goal is to maybe someday come into conformity, but.
And how do we, how do we deal with property that straddles county? Do you and do we and Lincoln both have to agree?
Yeah.
You typically address what exists within the Boyle County line as if it were its own standalone piece. And so that's been kind of the review on this piece of property. You know, where Michaela's communicate with Lincoln County, that's another way to make sure there's compliance with the other half.
And is there any way for us to make sure that there is no additional, as you said, non-conformity? Somebody were to come in and add more?
They would be in violation and we'd have to send a notice of violation and get it removed.
I can't remember if I said so, so yes, the corrections have been made on the Cole plat and it's ready for final approval today. Third, we have Jackson Living Trust by Ann Jackson, the trustee. They've applied for the subdivision of a five point zero zero six acres of land located at zero Gobby Lane in Parable Boyle County. Property is zoned ag and this is just a very straightforward division. All suggestions and corrections have been taken care of. It's ready for final approval and signature today. Fourth, we have Francis Pinkleton and others. They've applied for the subdivision of eleven point seven three five acres of land located at eight sixty Pope Road in Danville. This property is zoned ag. All corrections and suggestions have been taken care of. We are waiting on utility signatures. It's ready for final approval and hopefully for signature today as well. Any questions on that one? Okay. Next, we've got Dee Dee Smock and the Mitchelsburg Church of God. They've applied for the subdivision of point zero two acres of land in two tracts located at ten fifty-seven Kentucky Highway eleven oh eight Park School. The property is zoned ag. And this is really a pretty simple, just switching corners between lot owners to try and even out their lines for various reasons. All corrections and suggestions have been made. We're waiting on signatures on this one from the owners. It's ready for final approval. Any questions? We have Larry Burdette and Terry Stevens. They've applied for the subdivision of zero point zero five two acres of land in two tracts located at eleven hundred and ten ninety-five Glendive Court in Danville. Property is zoned R one A. Uh, it's just neighbors exchanging some properties. All correction signatures have been made. This plat's all signed, ready to go, ready for final approval and signature today. Any questions? Lastly, we've got Mike and Lisa Graves. They've applied for the subdivision of zero point one two five acres of land known as three oh five South Brack Street in Parable. The property is zoned central business. All corrections and suggestions have been made. All signatures received. It's ready for final approval and signature today.
Any questions or comments from either the commissioners on what's been presented?
So, so for this, this last one, there's this residence that's next to the church.
Mm-hmm.
Three oh five, that's, that's in the central business district, right? It's still zoned that way?
Yes.
Okay, and that, does that, is what allows it to be a smaller size lot than anywhere else?
Yeah, we have no minimum lot size standards in central business.
Okay.
Any other questions? Take, you need a motion then to approve these?
All five of these are final approval?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion that we. Are they different? They're all final?
They're all final.
There's seven.
That's what I, oh, excuse me, all seven of them. That's what it is. I'd like to make a motion to, for a final approval on all seven plats that we heard.
Okay, we have a second?
I second.
Commissioner Alexander, Alexander seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, this will bring us to the public hearings. Oh, and the first one we'll do is, as listed, Jody Sharp Construction Company has requested a zoning map amendment from R one A Single Family Residential to R one C Single Family Residential for thirty-two point four eight four acres of land located at Hartland Drive and Ridgeview Road, Danville. And we would, we would start.
Um, I think, yeah, go ahead.
I'm just going to make a note for the record that Commissioner Davenport is recusing from this hearing.
Okay, and so we'll, next step is to move into the staff report on this, on this topic.
Yep. All right, like you said, this is a thirty-two point four eight four acre parcel of land. It is located south of Colonial Heights and north of Candlewood, two existing subdivisions. Um, it has access from Ridgeview Road and Hartland Drive, two local roads that go through Colonial Heights and Candlewood. It's currently zoned R one A, which is one of our single-family residential zoning districts. And they are requesting to go to R one C, which is another single-family residential zoning district that allows for smaller lots and higher density. Um, when looking at a zoning map amendment, I just wanted to give the commission and the public a brief reminder of what K R is. So the state statutes direct us to look at when we're looking at a zoning map amendment. Basically, it asks if the map amendment is in agreement with the adopted comprehensive plan. Or in the absence of such a finding, you're supposed to look at whether the original zoning classification given to the property is inappropriate and that the proposed zoning classification is appropriate. Or that there have been major changes of an economic, physical, or social nature within the area involved what were not anticipated in the adopted comprehensive plan and which have substantially altered the basic character of such area. For this, I'm primarily looking at the comprehensive plan. I don't know that the other two would really be applicable in this instance. So, and that's what my staff report is going to focus on.
So you, you've, the third, the last item on there, the last one with major changes of economic, physical, social, you don't feel that that is applicable at all?
Um, I mean, I think you could probably look at COVID. Our last comprehensive plan was adopted prior to COVID. The housing market has certainly changed significantly. I did provide additional supporting evidence from the twenty twenty-two housing report that was completed for the city of Danville and Boyle County. Um, I think that was important to look at because our, our base study was basically done in twenty-eleven, which at this point is a long time ago. So the, the housing numbers and what it's intending us to look at for the needs of housing within the city and the community is probably out of date at this point. So you could certainly look at that. I think there is probably an argument to be made if you, if you want to go in that direction. And I think you could use the housing report as kind of a ground for that finding if you wanted.
I just, I just didn't want to forget it because I believe there, there could be something in that category.
Yeah.
But I'm okay with the approach you're doing, Director.
Okay, yeah, and I mean, generally, the applicant would also provide evidence for what finding they're trying to.
Right.
You know, my, my intent is like, I'm supposed to be the expert in explaining what the comprehensive plan is directing us to look at here. So I'm just going to kind of walk you through what.
I thank you for the two bullets, a very important, very important note, yes.
So when, so when you all are making a motion, that should be what the finding is based off of one of these three. Um, and if you find that it doesn't meet any of these findings, then that's what would be ground for denial. So typically, when you're looking at the comprehensive plan, the first thing that you're looking at is the future land use map. Um, in this instance, the future land use map is showing the subject property as low-density residential. Low-density residential allows for single-family development with gross densities ranging from one dwelling unit per acre to five dwellings per acre. The gross density proposed for this subject property, if it were to go to an R one C style development, would be three point eight two dwelling units per acre. So it is in agreement with the future land use map. However, the comprehensive plan tells us to look beyond the future land use map for residential development. It says that we should also be looking at this guidance for residential development. So that's what this is, I'm sorry, that's a lot of words. I know that's kind of hard to read. I'll just try and run through those bullet points quickly.
Director, do you have when that became an R one A?
Um, it's been R one A for quite some time.
Okay, yeah, we're going past, past two thousand seventeen, two thousand eleven.
What's that? Yeah, seventies maybe.
Okay, so it's well-known that it was an R one A, okay.
Yeah, I think you probably did it when Colonial Heights and Candlewood was all, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. So a detailed traffic impact study performed by a certified traffic engineer must be submitted on any residential development that will generate traffic greater than five hundred average daily trips and or a hundred vehicle hours per hour during peak hour. Our zoning ordinance also provides guidance on the traffic impact study. And it basically says if you're going beyond a certain number of dwelling units, I believe the number is fifty, then you are required to submit a traffic impact study with the zoning map amendment. However, the zoning ordinance also does allow the city engineer to waive that requirement. In this instance, he did just that. So we're basically waiving it for the zoning map amendment. We might look at it when we get to the subdivision plat phase if this gets approved.
When did this, what timeframe did the city engineer waive it?
Um, pretty much right at the beginning. We had a meeting with the developer and the city engineer. And the city engineer said upfront that he was.
Two thousand twenty-two?
He waived it in two thousand twenty-two as well.
Was it earlier than that?
No, he waived it for this new application as well. I, I should explain that, sorry. I meant to do that upfront. This, this was, this is a second time we've heard this application. This was heard in January of two thousand twenty-two. Our zoning ordinance requires a twelve-month period before you can reapply for a zoning map amendment. That twelve months has passed. We also got receipt of a complete application on this on July thirty-first. State statute requires that planning commission take action on an application within sixty days. We passed that sixty-day requirement because we had some trouble getting a quorum for this application. So in that case, we would either have to forward this application to the legislative body without a recommendation or the applicant can choose to waive that sixty-day requirement. In this instance, the applicant waived the sixty-day requirement, so that's why we're hearing it beyond that sixty-day timeframe. Sorry, I did mean to say that upfront, I forgot. Um, is there any more questions on the traffic impact study?
I just was curious how, how far ago that happened, waiving on that.
Yep, so he waived it in the, the first site, you know, the first application in two thousand twenty-two, and he waived it again for this.
Yeah, in two thousand twenty-two, the property nearby has lots of houses and homes on both north and south of that area. That's what this comes to say. So it was, they weren't empty fields, farm fields, when that event occurred.
Yeah.
That's what I'm trying to say.
Yep.
They took an account or they knew and understood that those housing, homes were there.
Yep.
Okay.
Is there any more detail of why we waived it? I mean, it's, it's a requirement, but it's able to be waived, just for our information?
It's, I, I kind of feel for requiring a traffic impact study for a zoning map amendment is a bit burdens, burdensome for an applicant. It's, it's kind of a heavy expense to take on before you know if it's actually going to get developed or not. A traffic impact study also, it's, it kind of measures the level of service that's able to be handled on a roadway. So it's not going to give as much direction as you might think as far as what, what you're looking for. So it might indicate some need for traffic calming measures, which is something that we've already talked about with the developer and something that is going to be addressed if it gets to the subdivision plat phase. And it might look at Shakertown Road, but.
Yeah, the city engineer waived it. He did not delay it. Though, that's what you're telling me, he didn't postpone it till another time?
He, he waived it for the zoning map amendment.
Yeah, for zoning map amendment, that's correct, for that particular.
I'll welcome any correction to this, but I was looking at my notes from the last time we heard this application. And Director Hunter said that traffic impact study might be more relevant where there are new street cuts and where there aren't any with this application. That's a justification for a waiver.
It typically looks at whether you might need a stoplight or a turn lane or things like that. But with it connecting into existing local streets, there's only going to be so much that can really tell us. Also, this property is currently zoned R one A. That's something to keep in mind. It's not zoned agricultural. So when we're looking at going from R one A to R one C, we're really looking at an increase of about twenty lots from what could currently be developed on this lot today. So, you know, it's obviously going to have an impact on traffic. I'm not trying to say that. And that might be something that we look at the subdivision plat phase. But as far as, you know, what can currently go there and then what they're proposing to do, we're looking at about a change of twenty lots, so. Okay, um, so residential development should not exceed the density of immediately adjacent developments defined as those developments contiguous to the external property boundary of the subject site by more than fifty percent. I, I basically took the density of the entirety of Colonial Heights and the entirety of Candlewood. I put Colonial Heights at one point eight five dwelling units per acre. I put Candlewood at two point seven two dwelling units per acre with an average density of the two developments as being two point two eight dwelling units per acre. The applicant is proposing three point eight dwelling units per acre. Sorry, this is a lot of numbers I'm throwing at you. But I get it to be a sixty-eight percent increase, so it's not meaning that fifty percent. This is, but what the applicant is proposing is a. is proposing is approximately a 12% increase from what's currently allowed on the property. So they're not looking to go 50% beyond what's currently allowed on the property as being an R1A zoning district. It is a 12% increase. But when you look at the two adjacent, I am seeing a 68% increase.
Yeah, I came up with the same type of relative number you did, doing it separately.
Okay.
And it's huge. When you do it, wow, it's huge. But what you got here is a statement from the, from the property developer and that sort of thing, that they're not intending to go that far. Is that what you understand?
What's that? Sorry?
The property people are not intending to go that many housing units? Isn't that what you just said? 3.82?
Yeah, 3.82 is what I calculated as, and it would be a 68% increase with 3.82. That's what they would be proposing.
That's what's being proposed.
Yeah. I think to get at 50% exactly is about 3.42, which puts out 111 lots. I see the proposal is 124 lots. 111 is pretty similar to what you can get with an R1A zoning district. So, yeah.
This is a should guidance, not a must.
This is a should guidance. We have approved several since I've been here and in the past five years that exceed that 50%. I really think the intent of what this was trying to do was to prevent multifamily residential from going into low-density, single-family residential, not looking at single-family to single-family, but you, you can interpret it as you want. That's just what the comp plan guides us. So. And one line shouldn't dictate it. It's supposed to be the comprehensive plan as a whole. So this is just one aspect. You've got to look at goals objectives and, you know, things like that. So residential development should have streetlights, sidewalk curbs, gutters installed at the time of development. The subregs kind of takes care of this. It's going to have to meet all requirements of the subregs. It will meet all that. Residential neighborhoods should be protected from adverse impacts of proposed development and land use changes. You know, the proposed development would obviously allow for denser, single-family residential with smaller lot sizes than what's currently allowed. We are looking at increased traffic, but like I said, it is currently zoned R1A. So if the property is developed, you're looking at increased traffic either way. But it is certainly going to be slightly higher density, smaller lot sizes than what would be currently allowed. And then finally, residential development should be discouraged on lands with greater than 12% slopes. There doesn't appear to be significant topographical challenges on this property. And last two pertain to high-density residential development, which is not applicable in this case. Is there any more questions on that?
I'm just trying to follow what you said.
I know. I'm sorry. I try not to take too long here, but.
A lot of good numbers there, though. But it does give you an indication of what's going on.
Yep. All right. If you think of anything, Steve, I can circle back to that.
I'm sorry.
No problem. And then just quickly, the 2022 housing report, which I had mentioned I had looked at. Like I said, I think the, the housing data in the comprehensive plan is slightly out of date at this point for 2011. The 2022 housing report did, indicated 2.2% increase in population in Boyle County within 12 months, which amounts to 665 persons and results in a need for 273 housing units, which is more than what the comp plan was showing. The Housing Affordability Index shows that the, that housing is less affordable in Danville, Boyle County than adjoining counties, but the higher cost of housing is not offset by a corresponding increase in income level. The report recommended a number of proactive steps to encourage housing growth, which includes policies and incentives may be put in place to facilitate the construction of a substantial number of moderate-priced, average-quality homes with modest detail and amenity configurations in order to improve affordability for first-time homebuyers. In order to advance, enhance affordability of the moderate-priced housing, development land needs to render a higher density for these entry-level homes, more lots per acre. Both land acquisition and infrastructure could, costs would thus be spread over a large number of lots. It also indicated looking at infill development opportunities, which this is, and things like that. I would say the report as a whole generally tends to support what the applicant is proposing.
And these, the housing report are recommendations?
Yes. Yep. These are all recommendations.
They're not mandatory. They're recommendations.
No. It was just looking at what we currently have for our housing and then potentially what's needed to address some of the housing challenges that Boyle County is facing.
And the housing report is prepared by who?
It was prepared by independent contractors through, I think, the city or EDA. Yeah. I'm not quite sure who funded that.
Yeah. Commissioner Nollet, I agree with your general question.
Sure.
Because it's hard to decide. It's, the authors of this have a perspective and have an understanding of numbers, but it is raw information.
Yep.
Right. I'm just asking, under contract to EDA or under contract to Chamber of Commerce?
The, the goal of the report is there's a thousand jobs currently on, that aren't filled within Boyle County. And so they were trying to take a look at if housing challenges was part of the reason for that, and what we could do to address that, to potentially try and provide more affordable housing to fill these jobs. So that's kind of the slant of it. So it's not looking maybe as a housing stock as a whole. It's more looking at affordable. But it certainly had findings that suggested that there is a need for more affordable housing within Boyle County, and that should be focused on infill development areas.
And I've always believed Boyle County is a commuter county. People commute, come into the county, leave the county. They don't always live in the county, and that's just fine.
Yep.
And I think the, the economic development data would support that, but it would also kind of suggest that there are people who would live in Boyle County but don't because they can't find housing.
That is part of what it says. Yes.
That's what the data.
Yeah, the data is saying that it's more expensive to live in Boyle County than surrounding counties, and that the wages aren't higher.
So the, the, the report does not talk about this specific acreage, or 32 acres?
No, no.
It just talks in general.
In general, right.
Gotcha. So. This is the conceptual plan that was submitted by the applicant. So proposed lot layout. There was a slight change on it that I'm going to get to, so that's why I handed out a new copy for you all. But the applicant is showing 124 proposed lots at 3.82 dwelling units per acre. He is showing slightly larger lots on the northern boundary here that adjoins Colonial Heights. There is a connector road that would show a connection between Ridgeview Road and Heartland Drive that would connect.
Is there any more detail on what the larger really means?
Kendall, do you have exact lot sizes on that, or?
What was the question?
I mean, this is just conceptual.
The larger lots on the northern side near Candlewood.
I think you put them closer to what R1A standards is.
I can't tell by the map. Yeah.
Well, I just did a comparison myself, and it looked like, if you just look at the, the Colonial Heights lots that border the slightly larger lots of this new proposed self-development, the lots are not the same size, but they fall within the 50% guideline that was spoken about earlier. It does bring the adjoining lots, you know, to where the density is not more than 150%, but it's just the adjoining lots.
And I don't want to.
It's too early.
Say if I'm wrong. Yeah, and it's a little early, but I, I think Kendall was trying to put the lot what's at what R1A would require rather than what R1C. So I think they're about 20 feet wider. They, they kind of finagled with this after submitting the application, so they, they lost four lots from showing the larger lot sizes there.
And I, I'm, at the very top of the lot up there, it says Ramey up the top, which is R1A zone?
Yeah.
And Colonial Heights Phase B is R1C?
Um, no, this, that, that's a typo. Colonial Heights, it's all R1A.
Okay. I thought it was. I was confused. Sorry.
And Candlewood is primarily R1A. I'll go back to this really quick.
Yeah, because I thought.
We did do a zone change for this phase of Candlewood, I think, two years ago or something. It was just before I got here to go to R1C instead of R1A.
Right. So we're looking at that, that picture on the left there. That's the only one nearby, what we're talking about, is R1C.
Yeah, I believe this has also been changed to R1C. Is that correct? That's the St. James Lot. Yeah, so this, this is out of date, but this is also actually R1C.
The one in the bottom left here?
Yep. The one that my laser is on here.
Yeah, but the area, the area between there and the R1C above it, to the right, is R1A, correct?
Yeah, this is all R1A, except for this small pocket here.
You know, it just, when I look at them, I look at what's next door, and that's what I'm trying to capture, what it is next door.
Yep.
The R1C there is kind of, that one is there, but adjacent to the gray border, R1A.
Yep.
Yeah.
Oh, sorry.
No, the church is there, so.
Yeah, yeah, this is the Grace Presbyterian Church. So like I said, it's showing the connector road between, and also, this is the change, is that there's going to be, we will require a stub road here to show to this adjoining property. Anything that's above 10 acres is required to have a stub street. There's an existing stub street off Ridgeview Road and Heartland Drive, and it's for the same reason you're supposed to stub to any adjoining properties that are greater than 10 acres that aren't developed yet, that could potentially be developed. So it allows for additional connections. Are there any questions on the conceptual plan?
So is the staff report conclusion?
Yeah, I just, I added some language about why we need the connector road. The subregs do require this connection, and it would require this stub road. Also, the comp plan encourages it based off the proposed roads map that's in there. So you can see this is kind of where we're looking here. This is Ridgeview Road. This is Heartland Drive. So it's showing that connection. It's also showing a connection to Shakertown, which isn't feasible because that property is not owned by the developers. So, all right, that's all I've, that's all I've got. This is the language in the subregs that show the required connection.
Any other questions of the commission, of the staff? Okay, we'll go into the, the public hearing, hearing portion then of the, of this case. And again, we're going to give an opportunity for people to come forward and speak in favor or against. And we're asking all of you, basically, to swear to tell the truth to the best of your ability. And when you come up, you should state your name and your address. And first, we'll ask for comments from the floor on, on people who would like to speak in favor.
Sorry, Terry.
Yeah.
The applicant typically gets to speak first, and then it goes.
People, oh, yeah, who's the, okay, the applicant, yeah. I assume the applicant's in favor, but we'll have the applicant speak first, yeah.
My single comment, oh, I'm sorry. I'm Joe DeShar. I am the developer and owner of this property. And Michaela's presentation was so comprehensive that I am unable to find very few notes that I need to add to this. And one point I would like to make that was overlooked, this is an infill development, meaning it's within the city, and there is existing infrastructure, water and sewer available, and it will not in any way reduce the capacity of the city of Danville to produce the needs for this community. And another point that I would like to make, she mentioned the connector street to the adjoining property. And part of that request was made, when we go forward into the future in developing, to be able to help offset some of the traffic that is going to be on the connector, or the connecting streets. And that aside, I think that what we need to look at is the housing needs for the community. And Michaela brought up that we do need housing for workforce housing. However, when you look at Danville, Boyle County, you'll discover that we lack housing in, at all levels, not only at workforce, starter homes, but intermediate price, and the same, the price that, point that you have in Colonial Heights and higher. And that this needs to be addressed, and this is how we address it, by providing lots that are more affordable. And an affordable lot can have a significant reduction in the cost of constructing a home. It can be $10,000 to $15,000 difference. And with 8% mortgages today, that is a significant drop in the mortgage payment. And another point to be made here is that this development is in line with the trends that are currently occurring across the US. Small lot sizes are the answer or part of the solution to the housing problems that we have today. And when I look at this development, we not only can have affordable housing there, but we can have homes that are in the price range of 400, 300, 400, $500,000. If you go to Phoenix, Arizona, lot sizes are a lot significantly smaller than these, and they are selling for $1 million. So we can have large homes on small lots. Now, will we have the width and breadth that we like? No. But they become available. And with that, I have no other comment. I'm, I will answer the questions that you have to the best of my ability.
I had, I had a general question, and I, earlier you heard me bring up the R1C section down in Candlewood.
Yeah.
The other one down in there. I know what some of those housings look like.
Yeah.
Is that what we're looking at in this area proposal, of that style of house?
I don't think I said that we're going to be working with affordable housing in this development. The market for this development is going to be determined by the price point needs within the community. Presently, I think this body approved a 50-lot development on Baughman Avenue for workforce or affordable housing. At this point in time, 50 lots is a significant number there. And so going forward, I'll have to address the area that's best suited for the price point in these homes.
Well, I just bring it up because you're absolutely correct. Nobody always knows what the new, the new area that we're talking about here.
Yeah.
What it might look like. But I'm just suggesting you may have a vision on what that would be. And we're looking at, I'm looking at what's around the area, whether it's similar to, or whether it's the same quality, same characterization, same style. And it needs to address, just what you're referring to, affordable housing. That is a complicated task that you're very good at. I'll leave that to come up with the right solution in your world. I'm just trying to get comfortable on what might these things look like, the houses.
In answer to your question, I have no idea which direction design is going to go.
Okay.
Designs in homes like colors change within a year or two years.
Well, I appreciate it. You don't have to have that affirmed at this point. I just thought maybe you had that, that where it was going, which works out just fine. Thank you, by the way, on getting your roads and your entrance into the area. It looks like in the map laid out fairly nice for you. It's that, that's much better. This was a surprise to me when you had to put the extra on the top over there on the right-hand side of the scope, that additional accessway.
Well, in my former presentation, I was remiss by not having a conceptual map. And. And we did this in order for you to be able to visualize what we had in mind.
Oh, I, it's very important. The more you have, it makes it easier to fill. You're absolutely correct.
You know, we can sit up here and do the hand signals and never arrive at anything.
A question I would have is, oh, you know, they have manufactured homes, modular homes, site-built homes. Well, what, what type of home are, are you planning on?
Well, uh, we have to be careful when we go down that road. With the development of artificial intelligence today, and with the lack of workforce available out here, we are going to end up, at some point in the next five to seven years, with homes that are going to be built and manufactured within factories. Now, will that mean that it's a mobile home? No, it will not. But that is going to be the process by which we are able to provide housing for our population, or for us. We're six million homes short in this nation.
I also want to add to that, sorry, my mic's not on. Manufactured housing is not allowed in our residential zoning districts, so you can do modular homes, but you can't do manufactured.
No.
Which is what we tip, it's mobile homes.
So, it would either be modular or site-built?
Yes.
And help me understand the difference between, I thought there were four. I thought there were mobile homes, manufactured homes, modular homes, and site-built homes. Is there only really three?
Mobile homes are constructed before nineteen seventy-eight. Anything after that is supposed to be called a manufactured home.
Okay.
People tend to still refer to them as mobile homes, so that's what you equated to in your mind, but they're actually, the, the proper term is manufactured.
Okay. So, the modular home is when, which we often see coming down the road, built in sections, and then assembled at the job site?
That's correct.
The difference between a manufactured home and the home that you're referring to is that all of the inspections occur within the factory. And when you have a home that's brought in on a trailer like that, you have the local building inspector coming in and inspecting that. That, that is one of the major differences in that type of construction.
But a modular home is, is what we often see coming down the road, half of it, or a third of it, on a trailer, right? And they get to the job site, and it gets assembled. It gets put together, two halves put together. I mean, is that's a?
I, I can't answer that, because when I see that coming down the road, I think that that's a, a mobile home.
That, that is what we would define as a modular home. So, for our purposes, for our zoning laws, that's what we have defined as modular.
Yeah.
It's assembled on-site, and like Jody said, it would be inspected by a local building inspector rather than through the state or federal, I'm not sure, for manufactured, but. Yeah, it's on a permanent foundation.
Right. But whether we're talking R one C, or R one B, or R one A, they both allow modular and site-built homes.
Yeah.
Jody, I have a question, and you may not be able to answer this just yet. I'm concerned with compatibility, and a lot of people who live in Colonial Heights are concerned about the look of the houses that's gonna be built along their forger. Do you have a square footage, above-ground square footage you're planning on building?
No, not at this point in time. That will be a part of the process of when I come back in for a preliminary and final plat. You know, as I stated earlier, I have not determined the market that this development is going to fill. And that will determine the size. In other words, we could be from eighteen hundred square feet in size, back to fourteen, thirteen hundred square feet in size.
Yeah, and that's, that'll come back to the commissioner group to be looked at at that one moment. Will it?
We typically look at the subdivision plat. We wouldn't look at minimum lot size.
Yeah.
You know, once, once the subdivision was plotted and the infrastructure was built, it would go to the building inspector for each individual lot for residential development.
So, we have nothing to say about compatibility with neighboring?
Um, I mean, I think that's part of the zone change process, but it won't be part of the subdivision plat process.
So, you're saying that you can't say that they're gonna be the same square footage or close to it as neighboring subdivisions?
When I look at Colonial Heights, and this can very well happen in other developments, has happened in other developments. Colonial Heights has basement homes in there that are in the neighborhood of fifteen hundred square feet.
Count that above ground?
Yeah, above ground, not counting the basement, above ground. And then you proceed through the development, and you will see homes that are up to twenty-eight hundred to three thousand square feet. And I can take you back to my present development in the Hunt Farm. We started out at somewhere around fifteen hundred to sixteen hundred square feet. We now have homes up to eighteen hundred square feet to nineteen hundred square feet. The evolution of the size of the home i- is not predictable. And as a general trend, they do not get smaller.
Any other questions, other question?
I had one other question about parking and characterizations. When I see, like what you have of the images up here, rarely, rectangular, very narrow to the length and the depth of the property element on there, I always think about, is there going to be enough room for the vehicles and accessories that people tend to have?
Well, one of the requirements here is to provide for two parking spaces at each home.
Mm-hmm.
And that would end up being a garage that is in the neighborhood of twenty feet wide, and you'll have a drive that's approximately twenty-one feet wide. And if you follow your setback of twenty-five feet, additional sidewalk and space between, you'll have an area there of approximately twenty feet by forty feet to pull two vehicles on. And if you don't use your garage for complete storage, you'll have a place to pull a vehicle in.
Yeah, and is there parking on the street on this one? I believe there is, or is there not? Do we know? Depends on what?
It depends how you do the right-of-way.
Exactly.
I'm assuming, I'm assuming not, but I, I don't know.
I just, yeah, I always get concerned when there's this many together. Where do you, how do you get around? It gets busy. I know by zone, but, but, by our technique, the way we review it, it's just an issue that can come up.
I, I will say this, quoting the city engineer back at another meeting. He stated that if you put in your restrictions, no parking on the street, that, that can be enforced by the local police department. I, I was unaware of that.
Yeah, when they decide to do that, yes.
You mentioned garages, or it will be a requirement of the subdivision to have garages on these lots, or not necessarily?
There will be an area for storage, whether it's a garage, or a carport, or something like that. You, you see all of those within our, our community. And the expectation of someone moving into a home today is to have a garage.
Yeah. Okay. Any other questions? Okay, thank you, Mr. Sharp.
Thank you.
Thank you, I appreciate the opportunity.
So, at this point, we'd like to open the mic to anybody else who would like to speak in favor of the zone change? Okay, we would ask those to come forward then who wish to speak against the zone change. Just be sure to state your name and your address.
Is that better?
Oh, yeah, much better.
So, I'm, you know, my, my neighbors and myself were directly impacted, because we live along the road. It's, it's right at the top of this, this property, so we're the most impacted. But most of our neighbors are, are in agreement with the statements, I think, that we're making today. They helped me compile this data and compile this, this summary of our feelings towards the opposition of, of this zone change. I'll try to keep it brief. I'm only supposed to, only supposed to have two minutes to, two minutes to speak. First of all, we're very concerned, as has been pointed out here, that there's a lack of consistency between the homes that'll be built in this proposed land compared to what's in Colonial Heights. And we, if you look at the comprehensive plan, especially the land use section, goal one says that you should respect the character of the existing neighborhoods by encouraging new development and redevelopment that will conform to the existing context. So, this is something that's a very big concern to us, that it's not gonna be consistent, because the lots are gonna be so much, so much smaller, that I don't see how you could possibly make, make any kind of consistency with what you see in Colonial Heights. The next point is, you know, Colonial Heights is, as we pointed out, is there are homes that are fifteen hundred square feet, and that's because it's deed-restricted, and it's not considered affordable housing. So, fifteen hundred is the minimum square footage in that neighborhood. And as Mr. Sharp pointed out, up to three thousand square foot you'll find in that, in that property. Next, we did a little bit of a, a market study of our own, and found that if you look at the, the homes that were sold over the previous one-year period, there's not data that, that really shows that this type of housing is necessary, this type of zone change is necessary. We found that in the six-month period before, there were a hundred and fifty-seven homes that were sold in Boyle County. And if you split it at two thousand square feet, and say that that's the dividing point, fifty percent of the houses that were sold were below two thousand square feet, and fifty percent were above two thousand square feet. So, it seems like it's in the equitable split around the two thousand square foot mark that people are looking for homes that are larger just as easily as, or just as, as much as people are looking for homes that are smaller. And then if you set the price point at two hundred and fifty thousand for a typical home sale, again, it was right at fifty percent split. There were fifty percent of the people were looking for houses above two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and as they were looking for houses below two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Or that's what was sold in Boyle County. So, it seems like the data supports that.
Your count of houses came from where?
It came from the Boyle County neighbors. You know, the Boyle County neighbors publishes the houses that are sold for that previous month. We'd looked at the, took that, just took it straight out of the back of that Boyle County neighbors, and then compiled it all, and it, it was, you know, that, it came, we assume that it's correct if it was published in, in that, you know, publication.
I think that's the list price, though, they give there, not the sell price, but, yeah.
But, yeah, it's, for sure. So, some offers may have been lower, and some people may have been, you know, accepted a lower price. But that's what was listed in the, listed in the Boyle County neighbors. That's where the data came from. So, it seems like there's a fifty percent split, either at two hundred and fifty thousand or two thousand square feet, for the houses that are being sold in Boyle, Boyle County. And I know we're not supposed to mention it, but we're very concerned about the impact to property values. If you're selling what's considered an affordable home right at the border of Colonial Heights, it's certainly not gonna make our property values go up, when that kind of, that kind of establishment, or those, those kinds of properties are built right next to our homes. It's not gonna make our property values go up, for sure. And that was goal two of the Land Use Act, that you shouldn't do anything to, to decrease the property values of the adjacent properties where construction is happening. The next point is the traffic study. I know that it was waived in this case. If you look at this property only on the, on the, and, and decide if you should play with the traffic study, maybe, without looking at the bigger picture, I think that it's easy to make that. But if you really look at where this road, this connecting road goes in, if you add that connecting road, the people from Shaker Town that want to avoid all the traffic in Danville can then cut straight through from Shaker Town Road right to downtown. So, we're concerned, very concerned, that the number of cars are gonna use that as a shortcut to get around the traffic in Danville and shoot straight from Shaker Town Road to, you know, out to, out to Lexington Avenue, especially the high school. You know, my daughters told me when they went to the, went to the high school, they said, Dad, if that road is ever finished, I'm gonna be home in five minutes, because I'm gonna hit that road, and I'm gonna zoom straight from Danville High School, and I'll, and they'll be home. So, I think that a lot of kids are gonna do that, and I think it's gonna increase the traffic greatly, not just from the people that live in the new development, but people that are gonna use that as a shortcut to get through the, you know, to get through town. So, I think a traffic study definitely needs to be performed in that case. And then the last, it's, it's a lesser point, but if you look at the, the map, there's a line of trees that cuts right through the property. We, we think that environmental impact should, should be done to, to check the, the impact of the, of cutting out that row of trees, because we know that that row of trees has a family of owls that roost in that neighborhood, and that's definitely a protected species. So, if their habitat is gone, those, those owls won't have the, won't have that for, you know, for, their, their homes are basically gone. So, I think that needs to be looked at to see what the environmental, environmental impact would be to the, to that piece of property. So, that's all the points that I wanted to make. I've got mountains of data here on the houses that were sold, and that's the size of the lots. If you care to look at it in more detail, I've got mountains of data here that we've collected over the past year, because we oppose this greatly, you know, the first time that this, this application was brought forward. At this time, if you have any questions for me.
Any questions for the commissioners?
The owls have, must, the owls must have been there a long time.
They are, and if you, you can't see it on this property, but there's another row of trees. It's just on the opposite side of Colonial Heights. And if you go out in the morning, or go out in the evening, you can hear at least three or four of them that are all talking to each other. You know how they talk to each other.
How long have you lived in Colonial Heights?
I've lived there thirteen years.
Okay.
So, they've, and they've been there as long as I've been there, so it's, there's, there's like, you can, I don't know exactly where they are, but you can hear them start to talk to each other in the morning and the evening, and, and the.
But that property that we're talking about here is a natural development area, even back thirteen or twenty years ago. We were expecting to build something there.
Yeah, yeah, I understand that. But now, it's since that time, if owls were roosting there, you know, you'd, yeah, I understand, but I'm looking for any points that would, that would help to crush this. So, you know, I'm reaching for anything.
Hey, I, I didn't want this commission to be accused of ignoring it, but it's, it's been around a long time.
Yeah, yeah.
Nobody did anything for, about it.
I understand.
Any questions of?
From, from the housing study and data that you've done, can you say anything about the current range of size of homes in Colonial Heights?
In Colonial Heights?
Yeah, in, in, in your current neighborhood?
All I know is that the minimum property size is fifteen hundred, and then it, I think the largest that we counted was thirty-two hundred square feet in that, in that. And if you're looking at lot size, my lot is the second-largest lot in Colonial Heights. And the one that's just south of that property is the, is the largest lot. But I, that's all I know. I don't know exactly the, you know, exactly how it breaks down in Colonial Heights, just the minimum and maximum.
So, so there are houses as small as fifteen hundred square foot in that?
There's only one that I know of, and that's the property that's directly across the street. And the homeowner that had purchased that property, his intention was to put a modular home on that property. And because it's deed-restricted in that area, he couldn't find a modular home that met the fifteen hundred, so he ended up building on-site. But that lot sat empty with a foundation on the lot for three or four years, because he, you know, he was at the point where he started to put a modular home, and then they stopped him, and then he had to build. But aside from that, that's probably the only one that's even close to fifteen hundred. Everything else, I would guess, is seventeen hundred or above.
Other questions?
You said you're, you had a lot size, you got it in acreage? Because I, I relate better to acres, size of, for your house.
For mine?
Yeah.
Um, I think that mine's about point four acres.
Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
It's hard for me to sometimes cap, capture that.
Yeah, yeah. And it's hard for me to think in acres, because I'm, I'm a meters, I'm an engineer, so I think in meters, so.
I'm out of the county, and I live, my house is on a one-square acre, so I can relate, I can relate to that number. I know what that means.
Gotcha.
So, okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you, David. Thank you, David.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you for making your time.
Anybody else would like to come up and speak against the zone change? Please come to the mic, state your name and address.
I don't know if I need to give my name because I know some of you guys. I'm John Mann. I live on Ridge View, and I live about, I'm the third house up the hill from Shaker Town.
Can you give us the address for the records? We need the address for the records.
108, 108 Ridge View.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
Thank you.
I taught school for 38 years, but I still get nervous doing this stuff. I'm sorry. I even owe those two. I taught one of them sitting back there. Anyhow, the speed that comes around that hill and down that hill is horrendous. And parking is on the side of the street, and it is creating a problem. The biggest thing is that I have noted several pets. In fact, I rescued one of them. They got hit because there's no way he could avoid it. And I also noticed one mother walking her kids with a stroller and almost get hit. So something would have to be done about the traffic and the speed. The road from that, where they talk about from Danville High School, is much narrower, and it comes into Ridge View. Okay, so you've got this narrow road coming into Ridge View, and these people just whoop. And I'm almost afraid to walk across the street. And we have several people who hike around the building or around the thing. And thanks to my grandmother, I could afford this house. Now, if she hadn't given me the money she gave me, I'd still be living over where I was living. So I don't want to see the value go down, but I also have a document that I should have looked up before I came that was zone requirements for our neighborhood. And I don't hear anybody ever talk about those zone requirements, but I signed my contract thinking those zone requirements would be enforced. And I should have brought a copy of that. I didn't think about...
Deed restrictions?
Yes.
Oh.
You know, square footage, square, you know, where you can have a fence in your backyard, where you can have a storage building. The storage building has to be of the same material as the house, and that's, that has not been followed. But the main thing I'm worried about is the traffic and going up and down through there. I'd love to have somebody come and do it, you know, a traffic study, and check their speed as they go. And I know we don't have enough city policemen to do that.
What did the, what did the city say when you approached them?
Sir?
About traffic? That's, seems to me the police would be the first...
Yeah, but, you know, maybe once every two weeks, a civil policeman come up to there. And it's because it's a closed-off neighborhood. I mean, there is no exit out of the neighborhood. You have to go Shaker Town Road. And as a result, it cuts down a lot of through traffic, and especially, like you said, I taught high school forever. Well, I can see those high school kids getting out of school and look out because if it wasn't for a police officer down by Paul Kelly High School, there'd be trouble out there real quick. And so they'll come flying down through there. But I hate to see a pet of any shape, form, or fashion, and I've taken to the vet, get hurt. I hate to see the mother who was pushing her kids get hit by a car. And so that's my thoughts, especially because of the narrowness of one that flows into the wideness of another, and they'll just take off. So speed bumps or something's got to be incorporated.
Okay. Thank you, John. Anybody else would like to come forward and speak against the zone change, against, state your name and address?
My name, excuse me, is Joan Stansberry. I live at 461 Boone Trail, which backs up to the field that we're seeing. We're on the right-hand side. And I guess I have questions and a comment. My first question is, do we know the width of those proposed lots?
Can you comment on the range of the widths of the lots? At least the smallest, the minimum width?
50.
Some R1C requires a minimum of 50 feet. So the lots are going to vary from 50 to 70 to 80 feet in width, as was pointed out by Makayla early on in her presentation.
Okay, so 50 to 70, 80 feet.
Okay, thank you. My second question, I think, is also for Mr. Sharp. Recently, there was a connecting road from Heartland Drive out to where the Presbyterian Church is that was developed. Was that your development? Did you put the new houses there? Do you picture where I'm talking about? It's in Camp...
It's in winning colors, shown in white.
I think it is the one that's shown in white at the bottom of the map.
This one here?
No, no, it's down.
Right, this one here?
Yes. Winning, winning colors. Was, was that your development?
Yes.
Okay, then I can just make an observation because we can, we can see out there, and I drive through there a lot. You were asking about garages. Most of the houses, they are lovely. They're really lovely. Two-thirds of the front is a garage door, and then there's a front door, and they're very long and narrow. You could, if you had long arms, you could probably reach out and shake your neighbor's hand. Again, they're very nice, long and narrow. And I'm kind of assuming, looking at the map, that that's what the new development might look like. It might not. But I just wanted to comment from firsthand experience. And also, as an animal lover, we have a night cam out, and we get deer, coyote, we hear the owls, raccoons, opossums, rabbits. I kind of hate to see them displaced, but that's just a silly thing, probably. But it is something I care about. Thank you.
Would anybody else like to come forward and speak against the zone change? I guess I would give an opportunity to Mr. Sharp, if he would like, to respond to any comments that were made against. And I know you did list a proposed zone change conditions. I don't know if there's anything you would add to those based on anything you've heard that would make the people who speak against it feel more comfortable or not, or just leave it the way it is?
Here is what I will agree to do with the zone change request. There will be a maximum of five lots per acre. It will be restricted to single-family homes, no attached housing, which is permitted in this zone change. Secondly, I will build a connector street to the adjacent property, the connector street, which will serve as a means of helping control traffic flow up and down that general area. Third, I will agree to connect to the Danville City water and sanitary sewer system. And third, or fourth, fifth, whatever, I will comply with the city's requirement that I construct sidewalks and city streets to their specifications. And then, as I had mentioned earlier, there will be a minimum of two parking spaces per home in that general area. Those are the points which I am committed to.
Yeah, those are, yeah, those are in your application.
Yes. And then, as I said before, give consideration to the fact that this is an infill project that will not have a significant effect on the Danville City waste and water system.
Okay. Thank you. So at this point, we'll close the Florida Public Committee and ask for, the commission, do you either have any discussions, questions that you may have amongst yourself or amongst anybody here? And if not, we then need a motion to proceed one way or the other.
I'm concerned about that ability is what will happen. You know, there's no guarantee of the, how big or small the houses are going to be above ground. You know, I'm not know if I'm in favor of making the zone change or not.
And I have reservations in that the area, there were 32 acres on there, has an R1A and has had an R1A zone for a really long time. Any houses and structures around there that got people moved in, that's the expectation you're going to have the same category on here. Now, the lots have been adjusted that they're nearly, nearly what 1A, R1A is. So why not just leave it as that? That's where I'm leaning in that category, rather than allowing an R1C category. I'm not sure what I'm achieving difference with the number of houses being allowed. Plotted difference count isn't there yet. So I have some concerns on where this, the history was...
Reducing lot sizes resonates, I mean, resonates with me a little bit because if you do see what's going on in the country, what Mr. Sharp said is the case, is, doesn't necessarily mean the houses are getting smaller, but the lots are getting smaller, an attempt to reduce the cost of the, of the structures. We tend to equate smaller lots with smaller houses, and that's usually the case. But in general, in the country, they're going with smaller lots in order to get more affordable homes.
And you're right. In fairness with this, what I heard there is that, I can't, I'll have to look my notes, but that up in Candlewood, he's got one of the largest lots, and that's four-tenths of an acre.
Yeah.
So it's, there are not a lot of differences in lot sizes between the two areas either. That's a valid statement.
Yeah. Other comments? If not, we need a motion to at least move forward.
Either allow it or you deny it. That's what we have to do.
Right, right.
I guess as a comment, it's just, it seems like this is consistent with what we've set out in, as our needs. It's consistent with the housing study. And, you know, we're in the process of updating the comprehensive plan. That's not complete and won't be until next year. It may end up being that we determine that there is need for more housing in the area. And that would be in the comprehensive plan update.
Yeah, and that's, that's part of what I'm struggling with because that's not out there yet. The housing plan was, here's the proposals, and it was a big look from the outside looking in. There's recommendations and guidelines that have not been adopted.
Right.
So what I'm struggling here is, from our perspective here, I don't have a good place to go pull out and say, here. And I also don't recall, I haven't been around, not all of us have been around that many years on the planning to know why it was selected the way it was at that point. So the history's gone on here. So it has to be based upon, what do you look at in the area and community?
Right.
I see our, the R1, the R1C category is only in a section of property just south of the one we're talking about. Everything else around it's R1A. It may, it may be a good thing to do, but I'm just saying, for concerning the community and the other people around there, it's all R1A.
So do we have a motion? Can the chair make a motion? Not usually, I think. So we need a motion from the commission.
Usually, it's not a chair.
Yes.
That's a disadvantage when you're the chair. You guide it, but you don't, you can't always select it.
So, you know, we need a motion, then we'll have a discussion of that motion, vote either up or down on the motion, and then we may need a second motion after that. But we need to start with someone who's willing to make a motion.
All right. So for purposes of discussion, I'll move that we accept or approve the proposed zoning map amendment based on what we've heard and that the map is in agreement with the changes that we've noted. And include that the, in the motion includes a summary of the evidence and testimony presented by the witnesses.
You want to modify that, Henry?
Maybe even at length. What I'd like to do is go through the motion that was made for the previous application, add a few things, and then you all can diverge from that as set forth. The proposal constitutes an infill project highlighted as preferred in the comprehensive plan, and the proposal is conforming to and compatible with the surrounding area. It comprises only a slight modification to existing zoning and use. What can be designed and built under the rezoning and the applicant conditions is not so different in kind or scale from surrounding properties, and especially from what is currently already permitted on the subject property. The housing report highlighted by staff suggests a major, unanticipated economic change, specifically a need for homes at this price point in this community, based upon a review of housing costs and salaries.
You added that last one there?
That's, that's an addition to the previous.
Because I guess I didn't do anything that supported that necessarily yet.
Yeah, and I, I have not read the housing report enough to be able to feel comfortable to have that attached at this point.
I would feel comfortable with everything up to that.
What I did enjoy, enjoy, and I did appreciate you, Henry, spending time, is explaining that the differences between the two is not very, that's exactly what I'm struggling with.
Yeah. So do you accept that motion?
I accept that motion.
Commissioner, what?
So moved.
Do we have a...
Repeat the motion?
Yeah, go ahead.
All right, so I'm excising the bit about the housing report. The motion is to approve or to recommend approval of the rezoning to the city commission based upon conformity with the comprehensive plan. The proposal is an infill project. This is highlighted in our comp plan as being a preferred type of project. The proposal conforms to and is compatible with the surrounding area. It's only a slight modification to existing zoning and use. What can be designed and built under the rezoning and the applicant's conditions is not so different in kind or scale from surrounding properties, and especially from what is currently already permitted on the subject property.
I think that's a lot of subjectivity in that motion.
Well, we, to move forward, somebody needs to second it, then we can have a discussion and then vote.
A second.
Okay. Oh, so we have a motion and a second. So is there any discussion to the motion?
I don't agree that there's minor changes to the comparison to the other areas. So unless we're willing to commit to some square footage, I think there's a significant difference in the northern section compared to this.
Well, we have a motion and a second. Any other comments the commissioners would like to make before we take a vote?
And my thinking behind this is more that this, for this group, and what we're doing in planning and zoning is to consider specifically the zoning requirements and the law. And if, at some point, this goes to the city commission and they want to overrule us, it's more of a political question and thinking about the, the city and the needs of the city, that's their decision.
I'd like to think they just look at it from a different set of eyes and different perspective. But you're right.
Okay, so at this point, we'll have a, we'll call a vote. All in favor, say a razor hand? All opposed? Okay, so the motion does not carry, four to two. And so then I guess we need another motion, do we not? Or do, we can't just leave it there? Do we have to now make a motion to deny?
That would be appropriate to move it forward. I think that you are also permitted to forward this without a recommendation to the city commission.
That's right.
But, yeah.
That's right. The alternative is to not approve and not deny.
Well, then we'll have to see if somebody makes a motion to deny. If nobody makes a motion to deny, then we'll be forwarding it without...
Motion to deny.
Okay.
And I'd like to second that motion to deny.
Okay.
I think Henry might want to add some language to that motion.
Take your time, Henry. Take your time, Henry.
Here was my summary of testimony in favor of denial, that there's not sufficient demonstration of conformity with the comprehensive plan, particularly there's no showing of compatibility with the surrounding area as set forth in the residential guidance. There's also been no conclusive showing of major changes. The housing reports brought forth has not been vetted by this commission, and neighboring opposition presented sales numbers from Boyle's, Boyle County neighbors, which did not suggest a need for this particular proposed development.
You accept that as your motion, Steve?
I don't know what the sales numbers look like, so.
Would you like to have that parked truck?
I don't know what that numbers look like.
So the motion will be no conformity, no showing of major changes because we haven't vetted the housing report. Stop there.
And did we have a second? Yeah, okay.
I make that motion.
Yes. We have a second? Okay. So Kenneth seconds, or Commissioner Alexander seconds. Oh, any other additional discussion? So all in favor of the motion to deny the request, oh, raise your hand. So we have four in favor and then two against or abstaining. So then the, the motion carries to deny the request. And that closes the hearing on this particular item. So we'll move on to the next public hearing item.
I'm going to go get Commissioner Davenport back. She has waited.
Yes, please.
So what are, what are we waiting for?
Commissioner Davenport.
Oh, yes, Sally, yes. Okay, the next public hearing, I don't, the engineers or surveyors, engineers or not, the next one has got to do with Danville Boyle County Planning and Zoning Commission has filed an application to amend the subdivision regulations. We'll talk about that next, and then we'll touch on the vertical bridge. So we all make best use of our surveyor's times, so.
Okay, great, thank you. I'm not going to read line by line through all of this. Hopefully you all reviewed it. To give a basic summary, the intent of this change to the subdivision regulations is to allow for an administrative process for minor plats. So basically, all the plats that we went ahead and approved today with one motion would be reviewed by staff and then signed and recorded. It wouldn't go through the planning commission full process. The intent of that is just to expedite reviews. You know, there was a lot of complaints with not being able to have the September meeting, holding up closings and things like that. This is standard practice around the state. I, I don't know many places that send all minor plats through the full planning commission board. I am just going to quickly read through what I defined as a minor subdivision. That way you all understand what we're looking at, and if you have any comments on that, we can, we can look at it and potentially make any changes that you all see as being necessary. So to qualify for consideration as a minor subdivision pla, subdivision must meet the following situations: Where a subdivision contains three lots or fewer, counting the remainder of the original tract, and fronts on an existing public street, and involves no opening, widening, or extension of a right-of-way street, or easement of utilities, nor has it been part of a minor plat recorded during the last five years; Where a subdivision provides for the transfer of land between adjacent property owners and does not involve creation of any new lots or building sites; Where any number of lots are consolidated into three lots or less and involve no new public improvements; Where there is a need to make technical revisions to a recorded final plat of any engineering or drafting nature or similar small discrepancy, but not including public improvement requirements.
Director, where did the five years come from?
Um, that, that was something that Terry and I talked about. So typically, there is some type of time requirement. That's just so somebody can't come in and piecemeal, like do three lots and then, you know, a month later come in and do three new lots, and then a month later come in and, you know, you get what I'm trying to say, so.
Yeah, that's, that's what I, yeah, I just want to hear it said out loud because that's what I thought it would be.
Yeah, so.
You got to pick something.
The time requirement is something that I think is probably something we can discuss. Most of this language I kind of emulated from Jessamine County. They do one year. I believe Frankfurt does five. Georgetown does no time requirement, so if you've had a minor plat done on the property, that's very difficult for staff to go back and review to see if a plat's been done in the, you know, 1960s or something like that. So the five-year requirement, you know, we could, I originally wrote it up as two. Commissioner Manin wanted to see a little bit longer, so I tweaked it to, to five. But if there's any comments on that.
No, I like the five. I'm just wanting to hear what your perspective, because you could have picked anything, absolutely.
Yep.
But you don't want to make it too, too burdensome, too much of an issue. There's a value, value to having minor plats.
And, and that doesn't mean that they can't come in and continue to subdivide the property. It just means that we would consider a major, so go through our, the process that we have in place now of going through tech review and then going through the full commission. My intent is not to send it to the tech review committee, but I will send it out to members that typically review, so I'd still send it to our county surveyor. I'd send it to any engineer in place like Josh Morgan. I could send it to the health department if it's in the county, things like that. So I'm not trying to forego the review. It just wouldn't go through that monthly meeting so we can expedite the process.
Does that have to be set in here in this document?
I, I had it written, and that's what you all have in front of you with it written. I made that change this past week because when I write it as a technical review committee, it seems like there's a formal committee in place. So it's going to be an informal review. It's just going to be common practice that I will go out and do that, but it's not set in stone. It's just going to be part of the staff review.
Okay.
Michaela, one of the consequences of minors versus majors in Jessamine County is there's a substantial difference in cost, maybe 150 or 300, something like that for a minor, and then majors are commensurate with acreage, and so it can be often in the thousands of dollars. Is that something that's a change with this?
I did not change the, the fee schedule. Right now, we charge 205 for minors. We basically classify them as such if there's no public improvements. So there might still be some that come through that are more, that are considered major, and it would still be the 205. If we want to take a look at the fee schedule, we could do that, but right now, anything that has no public improvements would be 205. Anything that does have public improvements, we have, I think it's 4, 495. And then if you're actually doing public improvements, we put a 1% construction review fee on the cost of improvement. So I don't know that it's appropriate maybe to raise the cost of that review when we have the 1% review fee in place for public improvements, but if that's something we want.
I think you need to consider that raise or the dollar value is a separate topic because that's in conjunction with people you're involved with. What's the value time for everybody?
Yep. And the one other change that I made in this past week, also pretty minor, it's in section 3.2. I pulled out B, so I didn't show it on here, but I, I wrote it up as a waiver because I wasn't sure if I had to do that or not for final plat review. I spoke with Henry about it, and I don't. So basically, I'm, I'm taking out the language of the waiver. They will submit a plat. We will review it. I'll send it out for a comment for any applicable agency that we need comments back on. And then once I get, once I send that markup out, that's going to be basically the preliminary. Once I bring those corrections back with signatures, that would be the final. If everything's good, I would sign it, and then we would record it. Right now, I have it written up as just the planning director needing to sign it. If you want the chairman to sign it, we can still do that. It's just, this isn't going to be on a schedule, so we might be having the chair come in once, twice a week. So, you know, that's why I wrote it up that way. It's pretty, like I said, it's pretty common practice to just have the planning director sign it. It's an administrative action, but if you all feel more comfortable with the chair signing as well, we can have it that way.
I, I think doing it this way is fine. If you find it that we need another signature on it, we can go back and address that separately.
Yeah, we can address it, yep.
The whole purpose is to make this more, a faster turnover. That's the whole intent.
Yes, exactly. It would still require utility signatures, everything like that. The elements of the plat would remain the same as what we currently require.
In, in the publication of agenda for the meeting, would we list these are minors that we're doing or not? I'm, I'm okay with not doing it, I'm just curious.
No, I mean, if you want me to give you a review of what we've approved, I'm, I'm happy to do that, but.
I wasn't, I wasn't so worried about us, but that agenda is a public document. Many people can pull it up and read it.
Yeah.
And it tells them now we're not, now we're not saying.
Everything we do is public if, you know, we just wouldn't be advertising what's getting approved. I think the intent of this is that, the hope is that anything that we're approving wouldn't have a major impact is three lots or less or minor transfer and consolidation plats, things of that nature. So anything that would have public improvements, if it's five, 10, 15 lots, that would have to go through planning commission. So it's really just some of the small minor, like some of the ones that we approved today were just simple transfers of, you know, .02 acres between two property owners that hopefully shouldn't have much impact on neighboring property owners, but.
Okay. Any other questions of Michaela?
Yes, and you might have been over this. Where did you land on a provision that would permit you to send minors to the planning commission if they're complicated for some reason?
I, I decided that the language in the subjects kind of covered me landlocked policy. We already have that in place, so it has to go through the full planning commission hearing. If there's anything that would require any type of waiver deviation from our requirements, it would have to go through board of adjustment or potentially a planning commission. So I think anything that isn't fully meeting our regulations, I would not have the authority to sign off on, so I'd have to send it to the proper body. So that's my view of it, but I, I know we discussed it.
And will it cover the situations where you initially start and believe it's a minor, and you discover during that time that it should be addressed otherwise? That's what you're saying as a major item?
Yeah, yeah. If at that point in time I realized.
Anywhere during that process, yeah.
Yep.
Okay.
I wouldn't be able to sign off on it if it wasn't fully meeting our minor plat requirements.
That's important to have that ability to change if some, if what you represented and what you were talking, starting it as a minor, and it turns out there's much more, many more hidden items that were unplanned and unexpected.
Yep.
Okay, so if there aren't any further questions of Michaela, I'd like to open the floor for public comment. Anybody who would wish to speak in favor of this, of this item? Come forward, state your name.
Dale Shepherd, AGE Engineering, 165 Foster Avenue, Stanford. Definitely.
I guess he's in favor.
Have on board. It's, it's been way too long coming. I mean, there's, just about all planning and zoning commissions have a minor plat that is signed off by the administrator, and I am totally in favor with it. I've got a couple of little more things that I'd like to mention. I don't know when I should do that, so you all tell me when, and I will, if not now.
Does it got to do with this topic or?
It has to do with this topic, but it's a little bit, it's just maybe a little bit broader. I don't know.
I'm guessing it's about the tech review. You can go ahead and.
The utility signatures and?
Yeah, you, you can go ahead and do it, I mean.
All right. That, one thing that, that we as surveyors and engineers struggle with here is the utility certificate signatures. The signatures are fine. That's no problem, except for the fact that we have a hard time acquiring them, to the point that it's almost ridiculous. You know, we had one last month or two months ago, whenever, the last meeting, that we were three weeks waiting on a utility signature. And now I'm not, I'm, I'm quite a bit older, but I'm not evidently as old as, evidently when TRS was created here in Boyle County, that was one of the big things for TRS was that the utility companies would have a representative at that meeting. So they would see what was there, what was coming in, sign off on it or not, or at least tell you what they needed to have on the plat to sign off. I think that's, I think that would be totally perfect. It's almost as if we're holding our clients hostage to get this utility signature signed for the utilities company's benefit, not for the client's benefit. And, and again, I don't think any of them would have a problem with coming to a TRS meeting and signing or whatever. But I think that should be, I think we should put a little bit more responsibility on the utility company itself and not the property owner, because it is a benefit for the utility company. That's, that, that's my big thing.
Yep.
The other thing.
And I, I fully agree with you, by the way.
Thank you, thank you.
What we had talked briefly about was if we put the minor process in place, if we approve this, then Michaela could go to the utility company and say, you know, that when we call you to the meeting, it's not going to be for the minor issues. It's going to be because we need your signature. And can you start, maybe we can put in place the fact, you know, I wouldn't know, I don't think we can require that they can, but strongly.
It's, it's my goal to get TRS to be more of a tech review than what it is now. Also, when you submit a minor plat, I'm going to be sending it out to utility companies as part of that, you know, initial submission. I'll, I'll ask for comments within five days. If I don't get any comments, I'm going to proceed forward as the assumption, but, so they will be, they will be receiving a copy of it upon submission of the plat, so. Whether it approves there or not, I'm not sure, but that's my intent, so.
That's good.
So yeah, the tip was hoping by moving the minors out of the tech review, we can get more utility company participation in the tech review because that will be considering the major, more major plat.
Yes, yes. And, and even if nothing changes with the utility companies, I think by moving the minors out, we're not under this, we have to have it in for this meeting. You know, it gives us a little bit more time to, to sort of rearrange some things, so I think that would be great. The other thing is, and this is just a, a pet peeve of mine and some of the people that we're dealing with. I don't know really why, but a couple of years ago, maybe three, we changed the acreage on a minor plat from one acre to 1.15, and I really don't know why, other than the fact that it was easier to save 50,000 square feet.
43,560.
Exactly. So, you know, and you, you don't really think too much about it, except for the, we, just in the last three months, we've had several people come in that has two acres. They cannot, now they cannot divide their property because they don't have .15. So I would just, you know, maybe.
Well, we can take that in consideration, can't we, when we, I guess that wouldn't affect the comprehensive plan though?
It's kind of something we're looking at in the comprehensive plan, lot sizes for the county. But, yeah, it, it's certainly something we can take a, take a look at.
Okay.
Just wanted to throw that out there. Thank you all.
Any other individual who likes to speak in favor of this change? That's adding new information.
Hello, my name's Steve Carroll with Carroll Land Surveying. I, like AGE, I'm completely in favor of this. I did about 20 years of work in Frankfurt, and they always had this streamlined system of doing it. Mercer County's got it. You're talking in Mercer County, Sean's a two to three day turnover. I mean, it's quick. The only thing that I heard Michaela say on the, if it didn't meet certain, if it didn't meet the parameters of the zone, for instance, there's a lot of places that, I mean, they've been coming up here recently, like Parable, the older parts of town, the older subdivisions, they don't meet. The zoning's just incorrect. And if you take, if all you're doing is swapping two hundredths of an acre, three hundredths of an acre.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, as long as you're not increasing the nonconformity, then I would view it as me having the ability to sign off on it.
Well, I mean, in some situations, you're always going to increase the nonconformity on one side of that line or the other. But it, there's no way to make, there's no way to meet it.
Yep. Yeah, I mean, you. Yeah, yeah, I mean, I don't think you could take from an undersized lot acreage to give to another undersized lot, because then you'd be increasing the nonconformity of an undersized lot. Henry, do you wanna?
That's, that is just the rule, as I've seen it in the places where I've practiced. If you're looking for some kind of divergence from that, I think that's, that's just in keeping with the policy of gradually eliminating undersized and nonconforming lots.
Oh, I understand that, but there's some instances that it may be parts of old Danville may be zoned R1A, or RM1, RM2. And they're completely out of, there's nothing in the subdivision that's in conformity. So I don't understand, I understand why, but I don't see that what it's gonna hurt by leaving those minor, to where there's no way you're gonna meet conformity on anything. I mean, you're not making it worse. It's just not ever gonna meet.
I mean, if you're not making it worse, I can sign off on it. Yeah.
I think she's saying that the relief in the allowance you're asking for is accounted for in this. Yeah, if you're not, if you have, you know, 2.3-acre lots, and neither one of them is dipping below that 0.3 acres in the shuffle, then she can sign off on it.
Like, we had one that, we had three undersized lots, and then we end up creating two undersized lots, basically.
And they were still undersized.
And they were still undersized, but I would view that as me being able to sign off on it, because you're not increasing the nonconformity. You just wouldn't be able to reshuffle those three lots. So one of them ended up becoming even smaller than it was before, if that makes sense. That's something that I'm not allowed to, and the board couldn't sign off on it either. We just, we do not allow the enlargement of nonconformities, so.
And I don't know that statute allows us to do any, any more than what is provided here.
Yeah.
And I heard you say you were gonna submit to the health department?
I would like to start getting the health department involved on county plats, but.
That's one of the, that's one of the points that I've always noticed. Every other county I work in, the health department is.
Signing off on plats.
Is involved, because that piece of paper's flat.
Yep.
You can show anything you want to on a flat piece of paper, but putting a septic system in on them.
Yeah, it might not hurt.
Yeah.
I, I agree.
And I don't, I don't see that we're serving any, serving the public any good by creating lots for sale.
That might not be billable.
They spend the money on them, and they can't build on them.
Yep. I agree. I ultimately would like to have them signing off on the plats, but it's just not something I have today. So it's a goal, but one step at a time, you know?
Good enough, yeah.
Any other comments?
Thank you very much.
Okay. So at this point, we'll close the public hearing, and we would need a motion from the floor to accept this change.
Yep. So I just wanna.
So maybe somebody can state what the motion would be?
I'll let Henry state the motion, but I just wanted to be very clear about the two changes that I made that are different from what I submitted to you all, so that we can proceed with those changes on, they're both in Section 3.2. I struck B completely, the final plat review in action. So just going to C, it will be final plat review, recordation, and action. And for A, I had the planning commission staff, comma, or an assigned subdivision technical review committee. I slashed the or an assigned subdivision technical review committee. So those are the two changes that I made from the copies that you have.
Okay. Do we have a motion?
The motion, if you're inclined to approve, would be to approve the subreg amendments as submitted and per the director's modifications. These amendments would increase efficiency and conform in all respects with KRS Chapter 100.
Would somebody like to make that motion?
I'll show move. I'm moved.
Okay, well, we need a second.
Second.
Sally, seconds, all in favor? Motion passes unanimously. The last item under a public, under a public hearing is the vertical bridge. And they have asked that we postpone this public hearing?
Yes, so they submitted, and then they decided they wanted to have an attorney represent them rather than the owner themselves. And the attorney did not have sufficient time to review the application. If you're familiar with cell tower applications, they're about 150, 200 pages long. So they've asked for us to table the application to the next planning commission meeting.
So we just need a motion to table?
Yes, that's.
The vertical bridge.
Is that, is that the document?
That's it.
That is the document, and I read through that, so you all don't have to.
So can we have a motion to table the vertical bridge, oh, application?
It will automatically go on the next agenda, or do you know?
Yes, I explained to them that we typically combine the November and December, gave them the proposed dates, and they were fine with that. So just the next planning.
That's what I was leading to, is if November, December is busy with other holidays, we usually move the meeting around.
Yep, I put that on the agenda in the other, other business, I believe.
Do we have a motion? Somebody make a motion to table?
Oh, I'd like to make a motion to table, sorry.
Second. 10 seconds, all in favor? Okay. So now, that closes all the public hearing items. Move on to new business. Oh, anybody from the advisory committee report?
No.
Budget committee report?
No, although we do need to meet soon, but.
Yes. Personnel?
Uh, no.
Okay, so the, so we have the other new business, which is the November-December meeting date. And Michaela sent out two potential dates, December 6th or 13th. So does anybody have a problem with either of those dates?
They're both Wednesday's. I proposed the 9:00 AM. I try and keep it on the same date. It seems to have worked the best for us in the past, but.
So it sounds like we're comfortable with either one.
It just seemed, makes better sense to put it later for the convenience of who's asking for things.
Yep.
So December 13th, right, is what we're saying?
Does that work for you, Henry? Okay.
Okay. We don't need to vote on that or anything, right?
I think we do.
Okay.
Because we're changing a meeting date.
Okay. Yeah, it's not a special called meeting. It's a regular meeting.
I think it is still.
It's still under the category of specials, what we've done in the past.
Yeah, I think it would still be a special called, so I won't be able to change the agenda from, once we advertise, but.
So we need a motion?
I'll move to.
New December 13th.
Approve our meeting date in December as the 13th, right?
As a special called meeting?
As a special called meeting.
Okay. All in favor? All right. Any announcements, then?
I do have one. I got a call from McDaniel Wealth Management yesterday. They are accountant service. They do our payroll and tax services for us. They are rolling out those services, and no longer will provide those to us by the end of the year. So I just wanted to inform you all, I'm gonna start working through that process. I'll probably get with Terry right away and get with Henry. I'm not sure if I have to do any type of bidding process, but she gave us a few. I don't think I do, because it's professional services. So she gave me two local recommendations, so I figured I would reach out to them, get some quotes, and then we can assess and go from there. But I just wanted to let you all know.
All right. So do we have a motion to adjourn?
Oh, Mr. Chair, if I just, I'd like to say for the record that Commissioner Alexander was duly sworn in before the meeting. Thankful for his service today.
Motion to adjourn. Okay. Second? All right, all in favor? Meeting's adjourned.